We call this meeting of the Exeter County Commission to order. We'll be with a moment of summation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Jackie, would you like to read the minutes? So welcome back after your extended leave. Glad to have you back.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Jackie.
Carrie, she didn't have a mic.
A little disorganized on my first day back.
Hold on just a minute, Carrie. Get your amplifier here.
Okay.
Good morning. The county commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse amic on Thursday, November 6, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rapperty called the meeting to order. There were present J.C. Rapperty, Commissioner, Donna County Commissioner, Tori Brady, Commissioner, Kelly Hockenheim, County Administrator, Carrie Wallace, Assistant County Administrator, and Tony Newman, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously and most otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Tori Brady, second by Donna Tanny, the commission approved regular meeting minutes, October 30, 2014, as submitted. Carrie Wallace advised the commission that Jacob Reeger, prosecuting attorney, had requested post comment of item number one on the agenda, as he will be in court for a short time during the morning. After discussion on motion by Donna Tanny, second by Tori Brady, the commission approved the transfer of Currie Library and Park Fund of sale revenue from the Financial Stabilization Fund to James W. Currie Library and James W. Currie Park Funds. The transfer will be in the amount of $51,583 in salary plus accrued interest. The revenue will be divided equally between the library and park funds. After discussion on motion by Donna Tanny, second by Tori Brady, the commission approved the reappointment of Paul Monroe, James W. Currie Library and Park Advisory Board member for a three-year term to its powers, December 31, 2017. J.C. Rapperty reviews the following four-year information items. Number one, Upshur County Sheriff's financial statement, September 2014. Two, agendas and our notice of meetings as listed. Three, meeting minutes as listed. Four, meetings as listed. Five, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following exemptions and or refunds as listed. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following request to turn on the office as listed. The commission approved the following request to attend meetings as listed. Jacob Reeger, prosecuting attorney, appeared before the commissioner, requested post comment of the discussion of the impact of the legal assistance. Until next week, as a discussion may begin to executive session. With no further business, on motion by Tori Brady, second by Donna Tanny, the commission adjourned at 10:00, 12:00 a.m.
Thank you, Jackie. I appreciate the reading of the minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as read? If not, I would request a motion to read the minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Okay, our first appointment is at 9:15, which will be Steve Linger, Teddy Beiser, and Bert Burside to discuss Tomlinsville Radio Tower improvements. We still have about 10 minutes, so we'll proceed to the items for discussion, action, approval. First item is the approval and signature of the 2014 -- excuse me, 2014 Equal Employment Opportunity Plan Utilization Report for Upshur County. We have a motion to approve my authorization for my signature to be placed on that certification.
Second. Do we need an explanation of exactly what that is, Sharon?
The Equal Employment Opportunity, it's a plan that we will utilize that's required of all agencies in order to establish our -- that we understand the concepts of the Equal Employment Plan.
And with our grant funding, we have to just complete it and we have to maintain it here. We don't have to submit it to the EUC. But it just kind of does a little review of where our figures are. We only received 26 percent response to our request to complete the survey, so how reliable the information is, I guess, could be mathematically, could be challenged, but that has been completed and we will have it filed and we just have to sign the certificate that we submit to them that says we have completed it and have it filed.
Kind of like the voter turnout. And determine what the ones that did vote, we all was the only ones that did.
Correct.
I think that's in concurrence with the EUC and also with the House of Justice.
Right, because there are grants required that we have to -- the ones that get the federal funding.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the signature?
Yeah, I have a motion to second.
That's right. So all in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Next, we have approval and signature of letter to Jacob E. Reeger, prosecuting attorney, requesting information for the 2013 financial audit, which is a letter from the county commission requesting we provide information to the office in that audit. Do I have a motion to authorize that signature? Would it be Mr. Reeger?
Second.
Did you say second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Next, we have approval of Louis, Upshur Animal Control Facility volunteer Wendy Miller, and also approval of Louis, Animal Control Facility volunteer Kristina Smith to work at those, who presumably have filled out the appropriate application forms and have been approved by the director of the county. A motion approval for those.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. The item number five has been withdrawn by the sheriff and is timed for some future consideration. Item number six, employment of part-time substitute library clerk for the James W. Currie Library, Darlene M. Gregory, effective November 16, 2014, at the rate of $8 per hour, working more than 19.5 hours per week. Do I have a motion to approve that position?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Next, we have employment of a part-time 4-H assistant for the West Virginia University Extension Office, Abby Jo Golden, effective November 16, 2014, at the rate of $8 per hour, working more than 29.5 hours per week. Do I have a motion to approve that request?
Second.
Okay. Having been moved to second, all in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Next, we have appointment of a full-time legal assistant for the prosecuting attorney's office, Ashley Brook Ware, effective date to be determined at the rate of $10.75 per hour.
J.C., before you actually vote on this item, Jake would like to enter executive session with you, discuss the salary increase for the current legal assistant, and I don't think that you should make a decision on that until after he speaks with you.
Not confirmed, no. I'd like to hear what he has to say.
We will postpone the decision on that until later.
And I'm assuming it's not actually an executive session that's scheduled, but it might lead to executive sessions.
Thank you.
Okay, we have your information items, correspondence from Hodgesville Public Service District announcing Terry Gould as their appointment for the water -- excuse me, for the Source Water Protection Committee. Correspondence from the West Virginia Department of Revenue, State Tax Department, guarding in preparation for board review and equalization hearings for natural resource industrial properties. That's preparation for next spring. We have invitation from the Family Resource Network to a poverty stimulation workshop to be held in Benedum School Social Hall, Benedum Social Hall, West Virginia Wesleyan Campus, November 18, from 6 to 9 p.m. We have the Upshur County Public Library Newsletter. We have a building permit report that shows that for the month of October, an excess of $600,000 in new construction occurred, almost $650,000. We also have notice of agendas, meetings, meeting minutes, and dates of meetings, and appointments due. We have a few minutes to go for 9:15. The board announced that we did hold a canvassing yesterday at the courthouse. It will make a, I guess, announcement or a certification.
The ones that we can, the ones that are.
Certification on the results of the canvass tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock here at the commission office. So, does anyone have any information in general through the commission public hardware under two minutes? If not, we'll take a very short recess. We will now convene our concession of the Upshur County Commission, it is 9:15, and we have Stephen Linger, Teddy Beiser, and Bert Burside present for purpose of discussing the Tomlinsville Radio Tower improvements. Any questions? If you wish to inquire, if you want to inquire.
Well, I guess they're all here to kind of update us, because apparently some discussions occurred, and Carrie and I were not here. And then in getting communication with Jim Ferry, I guess there was some discussions back in May about what updates needed to be done and the possible cost to doing that, but I don't know until we had Steve Linger put together some information for us, we had any, I guess, a little closer than an approximation amount. So I think it's needing to get clarification on exactly what we need, because the figures that Carrie and I reviewed, we are close in needing to do a bid process, because we're almost at that $15,000 mark, and there was possibility it was over that, so that would have to be submitted for bids. And so I think it's kind of to get everybody on the same page and to know exactly what it is we're needing to complete to get the radio towers where they need to be. And actually also getting official approval in the minutes, because right now, when Jackie looked back in the minutes, there wasn't an approval noted of the expenditure, so it's unlikely we get that in there as well.
We'd like to make the first presentation regarding Mr. Linger. Would you like to do that?
Sure. If my recollection is around last April of 2013, that we had originally started this project, it's the project to do away with the DC-controlled telephone circuit that we've been working on for a long, long time. The issue was first, we had to get approval from the FCC to get a new set of repeater frequencies, and that.
That took extended period of time as of the Green Bank.
And the first batch came back, we did not get approval for it, we had to reapply. And then Green Bank went through the slowdown, the government shutdown process, and so it was even a longer extended time to get -- we finally got approval for those frequencies, and then we were putting a list of all the hardware together, and the commission back in May had Jim Ferry get a group of individuals together to discuss this project. And we did, and at that time, we gave, I think it was, if I'm not -- it was around 18,000, I believe, wasn't it?
Jim was the letter submitted.
Yeah, that it would take that at the Tomlinsville Tower site and eventually up on Cleveland Mountain Tower site when we extended the project. And this is all part of a project that we've been discussing now, I think that's over two years, from the time of inception until time that we're now ready to implement this. There's some tower work that has to be done at Tomlinsville, as well as the purchase of equipment that we, everyone that was in attendance at that meeting felt that we had already received approval to purchase. It's just a question of the time. We couldn't order the equipment until we knew the exact frequencies that were going to go in it, because those, a lot of that equipment is frequency specific. You can't order one radio and adjust it to certain frequencies. They're only good for a certain width, you know, and then, so we had to know the exact frequencies we were going to use before we can even order any equipment. So it's the low band to high band crossband repeater that we will need to eventually do the paging for the county, since the siren system at this time, there are no manufacturers that make siren radios that will do paging. So it was a long, drawn-out process that these gentlemen here have put many hours into trying to get it all done, and now we're approaching the time that it can be accomplished. I don't know, you recall this, we have a lot of troubles with that telephone line.
Yes, and static, the interference, that's right.
And it actually will get a positive effect on it, and we can't use it at all, especially during the storms when we need it the most. So this has been a project that we've been working here for, it seems like, for years.
Now, is the work completed at the Cleveland Mountain?
No, it hasn't been started.
That's not the point where that can be.
No, that's the equipment that we currently have on the French Creek Tower at DNR that will eventually be moved. And we'll need some additional equipment to go with that so that everything's compatible.
So what needs to be done before that can be moved?
Well, we would like to get the Tomlinsville Tower site complete before we take all the radios off in the whole county. We would like to be sure that it's up, running, and then complete the Cleveland Mountain project.
Those are two phases.
Two phases.
Oh, sorry. Is this estimate we have, is it just Tomlinsville?
Just Tomlinsville.
So that's what we're talking about now? So because of that threshold, do we have specifications that's ready to send out for bid?
We have equipment list of everything that is needed. The tower work is usually done by a different group, so the tower work would be hopefully on a different invoice, different, because the person who climbs the tower, you know, there's a lot of regulations and specifications on who can do that work. And so we have been using this outfit out of Fairmont, I believe they're out of Fairmont. We also had a group out of Kentucky that was almost twice as much. So they have been working on the Tomlinsville Tower and have done a good job for us in the past, and that's why we were hoping that.
Have they given a clue?
They have, and I've turned that in.
Steve, can you just, because I know that I've had some confusion with the part that you're needing to do on the Tomlinsville Tower right now, which included the climbing the tower, which, as I understood from the quotes we had, the one from the firm out of Kentucky was 8,000 and some dollars.
Yes.
And that did not include any equipment that they needed to attach?
Only, yeah, only the equipment used to attach the cable to the tower.
Okay, but it doesn't include.
Did not include antennas or did not include other?
And then is that the same with the quote we had from the Premier Construction?
For Premier, the only thing is you would need to double their quote, because they gave a single line charge where the other one gave a double line charge.
I think that was the reason that we received those, some clarification as to whether apples were being -- if apples or oranges were being.
So what these people will do is just go up and put the connector things that are necessary on the tower for the equipment?
They will actually strap it to the tower and bring it down and put usable ends on it and install an antenna that we will purchase separately on that, because we want the antenna that we want to put up there.
So I guess to do this phase of it, so I guess the Beiser will be, or Premier Construction will be $2,900 to climb the tower, put whatever we need for attachment up there.
They gave a $2,900 quote, right?
Well, it was $1,450 on here, so to double that, we'll get both lines.
That will get us the tower work.
But we will have to purchase the cable?
That would include the cable, does not include the antenna.
So we will have to.
Is that right, Teddy? Teddy, would that include the cable, or was that a separate?
Premier Construction.
Yeah.
That does not include the cable.
Does not include the cable. On either case, that does not include the cable.
Clarification on that, that is for an antenna that we need now, and a spare antenna that could be used by the sheriff department, OEM, the fire department, EMS, school bus, anybody else that's on the tack.
So we'll need two antennas.
Right.
That is two. They give a quote for one, but you multiply it with two. One antenna is needed now, but I think most people agree it's a good idea to have a spare up there in case you need it.
Because on this one you gave me, Steve, there's two antennas on here, each is $4.25.
Okay, that's on Teddy Beiser's.
Yes.
That was the information they gave you.
Yeah, that's, okay. One would be for the installation of the cable and the others for all the parts.
Also on those tower climbing quotes is an antenna up there that actually belongs to the city that they're not overusing right now, and I was going to have it checked, because it does check bad, and to see if it would be repairable, and this would all be done at the same time, and discuss this with the tower people. And that would become a spare, loving antenna for the fire department if it was ever needed.
So are they going to do a little additional work for us?
Yeah, the work from Premier is quite reasonable, I think.
If you're going to climb 340 feet, you want to do all you can while you're up there.
Sure. So are all the items that were on this list that you exchanged, total $12,544, will all of that need purchase to be able for them to go up on the tower and while they're on the tower, do all the things they need to do?
Well, some of that is the radio equipment that is going to be installed in the little building below the tower, but the connectors and antennas will need to be purchased. But the project, as soon as we get the antenna work done, then we hope to have the equipment in to go ahead and hook it up.
And I guess the goal would be whoever does this climbing, gets all this stuff attached, will also complete the rest of this work?
No, it would be Mr. Beiser. Once the antennas, cables are brought down inside the building to where they will be positioned, and then Mr. Beiser would be installing all the radios, because you have to get somebody with radio experience to work on the radios, which is different than the cable.
Because the concern, Carrie's been adding up the numbers of all the things that we need, I guess, for the Tomlinsville Tower, plus the climbing and getting all that done comes to $5,444. $50,000. Yeah, yeah, $5,000. $444, which puts us at bid.
Well, since there'll be two different contractors doing work, I don't know, and they would be responsible for their own insurance and everything. And tower people can do radio work, so I don't know unless they have all those licenses.
So what you're suggesting would actually be two phases, two different.
You'll receive two aspects. Two different bills.
So you're suggesting that the combination, but by having it viewed in that perspective, that would negate the need to go out for a bid.
Just two different companies?
Yes. Two different projects.
Yeah.
Actually, he's got bids on the power service room, the one.
The climbing part, right?
The climbing part, he got two different parts on that.
Any other questions or explanations there?
So I guess what you've got is, to do the tower work we need to have done, it's going to be $2,900, this from Premier, and then $8,000, that's 150 feet. Yeah, $8,150 from the firm in Kentucky. And then while they're up there, we will also have to purchase two antennas and the cable. And I guess the supporting, whatever, has to be attached to the tower to hold those items.
The strapping part, they were supposed to, but there were some arms for the antennas that would need to be, yeah, that would need to be.
So that should all come in, under, way under $15,000 then, at this.
Do we have a figure on that?
Question, is she adding the Kentucky bid to the Premier bid?
No. No, it's $8,150 from the Kentucky bid and $2,900 from the Premier bid, plus then you've got to add your cable, your antenna, and your supporting things, I guess, for the antenna.
You understand that that's Premier and the Kentucky, it's one or the other, it's not both?
Yeah, I understand they're two separate bids, that's what I'm saying, they've got to consider between the two, but we still got to consider what our totals are to make sure we're not exceeding $15,000 where we would have to bid it out. Do you have a price on the cable?
They are one of these, you're going to be anywhere. This sheet, it's got copper in it, and it fluctuates just a little bit.
What's the approximate?
It's there on the paper.
They have $4,000 for around two bunches of 400 feet cable. And the antennas are $4.25 each, so that's $49, around $49, so. And then you've got to have these connectors, and the light and suppressors have to go up when they're up there too, right? That's how I would assume, because otherwise we could fry this stuff we just put up, we don't have a suppressor.
The light and suppressors go to bottom.
So do we have a total figure on what the low bid was, what's the terrible?
What's the, taking, just the, don't worry about the Kentucky bid or Premier bid, what's the cost of the other items, the other materials?
Not including the climbing?
Not including the Premier bid or the Kentucky bid, what's?
$12,544. And I believe that came from Ted.
So we're $12,000, earn about $2,900 to come the tower, so that would be something.
About $15,444. That's the, that's what we're watching.
But that's, then we're doing, now we're dealing with two separate contract, two separate jobs, two separate vendors, two separate everything.
Because one will be radio related, I guess, and then the other is tower. Is there any risk on the $12,544 from Mr. Beiser, going above that depending on?
No, of course, that's the highest.
Okay.
So that puts the total cost down.
$15,444.
And it does, my calls are two separate bids, so there's not, it's not.
That will be the total project for the, to complete the Tomlinsville Tower, as I. understand it, but...
Two separate contracts.
You've got twenty-nine hundred dollars plus the equipment that they'll be installing while they're up there, which is, as she said, it's little over five thousand dollars.
Actually, to complete the Tomlinsville project, you only need one antenna. So you can knock fourteen hundred dollars off of that, plus the cost of the antenna, unless, my big concern is putting a spare up. So if you don't want to do the spare antenna, you're probably down to about thirteen thousand dollars.
But I thought the point was to put that spare antenna on there while we had someone pay to climb.
Exactly.
But that's not nearly needed to complete the project.
Well, I'd say if we're paying to climb, we might as well have it up there just in case for an emergency. If something happens to the other one, products can have glitches and we want to make sure we have one that works.
Give me the right, this way, proceed on this, we're going to take these bids, these contracts that were not bid.
Well, I guess it's... These are just quotes and it's under...
Yeah, these are quotes and they're under, the tower climbing project and the equipment needed for that is under fifteen thousand dollars.
So the only question really is, is this a 911-related expense? I mean, is it the purpose of the occasion?
Well, it's, it's a control, I feel that 911 should be responsible for control radios and that each department should be responsible for their own mobile base station in their, in their station and any portable radios they have, and this would be a control radio, and that's why I feel that it should be a 911 expense.
So thanks for coming out with the 911.
Stay God in line and support that.
Thank you, Dirk. Any other comments?
I would like to know if we do this, if this is going to take care of the problem down the road, because I've always heard there's been communication problems, radios and stuff. Dirk, can you answer that for me? Will that take care of all the problems? Or in three months from now, we're going to have another problem, you know what I mean? Where this doesn't work and we need to do something else? Because if we're going to address this problem, I'd rather do it right. Communication is the key. From Fire Department, Law Enforcement, EMS, 911 is the key. If we're going through this expense, everything I ask is that somebody here can tell me, will this take care of the prop? Or is this just temporary? And three months down the road, or six months down the road, this commission is going to be facing another bill because we need a different antenna that's going to be upgraded.
About two years ago, Fire Departments came before this commission expressing concerns about communications and the county of Uptown. From that, at, in various discussions at several county commission meetings, what transposed was this formation of this committee, and we reported to the county commission from that a two-to-three-phase plan in order to remedy the concerns that were expressed by the Fire Departments. What it boils down to really was there were two concerns. One had to do with the county Fire Department and those operating from the northern half of the county with the Tomlinsville Tower site and the unreliability of the phone line control between the fire station and the 911 center in Tomlinsville. This phase that we're talking about right here remedies that problem that has been identified. Phase two has to do with the fact that the link between the COC center and the short tower at the game farm, that link is very, very noisy, and the Fire Departments in some other part of the county had been complaining about that noise on that link controlling that base station where they couldn't understand the radio traffic and the paging not going off and so on and so forth. Phase two of our plan addresses that situation and should take care of that. Now, can I sit here and tell you that that's going to solve all the problems in the future from anything? The Lord can't tell you that, and I can't either, so...
But I guess my question is...
Yet, what we have planned, the best of the engineering and experience of eighty years' worth of experience sitting here between Mr. Visor and I, that what we have planned to do will satisfy the problems as expressed by the county firefighters in the past.
Added to that, in terms of communication, we also were able to secure a grant for sirens, which is also a component of the overall communication.
Well, that is, that is true, and, and, and that's another angle that we're approaching things to make the situation better, but it does not address the problems that were brought to it.
Right.
That's correct.
What we are dealing with, there is a recognition among the people involved, the firefighters, 911, the commission, other parties, that there has to be a concerted effort to address these issues in a phased way, and we, we're working on that, this would step in that direction.
Now, to further what Mr. Linder talked about, it was our understanding, the three to, three or four of us that were on that committee which attended the county commission meeting, that we had, that there was approval by the commission to go ahead and purchase the equipment that, that was needed to do that first phase. So there's a lot of that equipment I think Mr. Visor has already bought, and I don't know that he's been paid for it, but I noticed he, he has it on hand, and he has been doing some engineering work to, in the, in the planning stage just to get that work accomplished, so...
Part of the delay has been getting quotes for the tower. The Premier Construction, the owner and the lady's husband had cancer, he recently passed away, she was very hard to get a hold of this summer, and Steve gave me the address for the company in Kentucky, and I contacted them, and about that time, I did get a hold of Premier Construction, and she's ready to go, just ready to go.
That's the, that's the very short order that we need to work with.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, I'm sure they want to get that.
That's the contractor that built that tower, so they're familiar with that structure and they can accomplish that up without a problem.
Is there any other, any other comments or questions?
I think we've had enough discussion, I think we have enough information, I think we're, everyone realizes something we need to do in order to provide the utmost communication for delivery of emergency services, and based on that, I would move that we authorize expenditure of fifteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars, is that correct amount?
That's right.
To be paid out of 911.
Combination together, I'd do that.
Is that the fair figure?
It's probably a hundred plus twelve thousand five hundred and forty-four.
I, I thought you were doing it as a phase of the tower and then a phase for the radio.
Well, we do two phases, but that's the total amount that would be authorized.
Because you've got to get the tower stuff done before you can do this stuff.
Well, but if we, it all has to be spent, so if we authorize expenditure, it has to be done in phases, two, three people have to be involved in it, we don't want to piecemeal that. I mean, if that's, if that's the figure...
Would we figure approve the first phase and then prove the second?
Same thing.
Where I get the, over the fifteen thousand, where somebody comes up and flucking them back on with them? If it's over fifteen thousand, you've got to have bids and everything. I'd rather approve one part of it and turn right around and prove the second, and then we wouldn't have a problem.
I don't know if it's a matter of that, it's just a matter of, it's two separate projects, really, because you've got towers, and those people have that specialty, and then I guess you have, as I understand, then the radio, and that's groundwork, that's a different expertise.
And as you're saying, as you've made the presentation today, these figures are bottom-line figures, correct?
He's, Mr. Visor said these were high estimates on what's...
Yeah, so maybe...
I would point out, no matter who puts the equipment in, whether I or someone else does, you do need to get the antennas up first.
And, and there is, we are under little pressure because the FCC only allows a certain period of time for this project to be completed without losing our frequencies.
Well, what we can do is we can approve the total amount with the understanding of the breakdown of the total, so that it's understood that it's not, it gets to separate companies. Jake, you can, if I'm, if we're not correctly doing this, you're our prosecuting attorney here, legal counsel.
Why don't you do two separate motions?
Do we have the figures with the separate motions?
Yeah.
What are they?
Seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-four would do the tower and everything on that, and then the groundwork would be seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. Oh, my God.
You get the figures, and I will draw the fifteen four, and we'll make it.
Actually, I said, you've got to approve one from Premier Construction for, is that twenty-nine hundred dollars for the installation equipment and then the balance to be thirteen thousand dollars.
So actually, the twenty-nine hundred is the company that's going to climb and do that part, and the rest of it is material amounts, like that.
Oh, that's what it is, okay.
All right, then, if, if the twenty-nine hundred dollars is the figure for Premier, is that the name of the company, then I would move that we authorize expenditure of the twenty-nine hundred dollars for the climbing of the tower and work with the... Then I'll second that.
Okay, motion being approved and seconded, motion being made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same side, motion carries.
Now, next, what's the amount of the second, the dollar amount?
Seven, they just, all they did was twenty-nine.
We just did the twenty-nine, so you deduct twenty-nine hundred from fifteen four forty? Is that correct?
Twelve thousand five hundred and forty-four. Being twelve thousand five hundred and forty-four. Is our motion to expand twelve thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars for the remaining phase of the tower work?
So move it.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same side, motion carries.
Thank you so much. Go climb the tower, we'll get you help. I'll, I'll let you go, you can come supervise. From the ground, thank you, Mr. Visor.
Thank you, both of you.
Thank you very much.
We will climb it now? About today? Okay, we now have Mr. Linger present, Mr. Rieger present, scheduled appointment to discuss salary increases for legal assistant, if I may, into executive session. We have a, let's see, appointment of full-time legal assistant for the prosecutor attorney's office, Ashley Brook, where effective date to be determined at ten dollars and seventy-five cents per hour. You wish to comment or...
I'd just ask that the commission get, move to go into executive session, because this is his first time.
Okay, well, having, I quickly have to go through this. There is a motion to go before, is there a motion to go before executive session for West Virginia Code, not six dash nine eight dash four? Is there such a recommendation you've moved to?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same side, we'll now enter executive session. Let's see, our next appointment is at nine forty-five, which is to adjourn or extend assessment appeals as per state code, table meeting, so we'll move it. Eleven dash three twenty-four, where the Cesspool will meet, software is necessary to the word of the board is permitted. Did you have a comment on that?
We're just prepared to adjourn now. I received a letter back from Dana Miller, who was the one who had the last hearing, and we had some trouble getting in contact with him, and he did verbally tell me he did not wish that hearing, so I sent him a letter to confirm that, and he signed that and sent it back on October thirtieth, so we're prepared to adjourn.
May we adjourn? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same side, motion carries, we are adjourned. Our next scheduled meeting, our next scheduled appointment is at noon, philanthropy West Virginia Finney Foundation Forum, which is to be held at a point other than the chambers. Kerry, you have comments on that?
I said, CJ Maggie, so you'll see the, your invitation, I'll get one of the attention.
Me myself, and telling the attending, meeting it when we read.
And that's like the Uptown County Development Authority is sponsoring that.
And then we'll be reconvening at two o'clock for supervisor meeting and then at three o'clock for policy board meeting. Authoritative issues pending currently before the commission. If not, I would move to a recess meeting.
May I build?
May I build?